The Tate and many of our city department heads who are here to answer your questions. The city budget covers a lot of items from your day to day lives like property tax relief, police and fire services, safe streets and sidewalks, public health, library, parks, and many more. So I'm excited to hear from you this evening. Let me turn it over to Laura Mays to tell you how you can submit your questions.
Thank you, City Manager Eric Walsh. As Eric mentioned, tonight is your chance to learn more about the city's fiscal year 2023 proposed budget and ask your questions and share your comments. Many leaders for these services are on the call and they're ready to answer your questions. We'll be taking those questions and comments from you live throughout this entire Telephone Town Hall meeting. And if you'd like to join our conversation tonight with your question, comment, or concern, just press zero on your keypad. If you're watching on Facebook, you can also leave a comment in the window there on Facebook, and we'll be reading those live on the air as well. Again, just press zero on your keypad if you'd like to ask a question. If you'd like to not speak live during this call, that's okay, too. Just press zero and let your operator know that you'd like to have your question read live on the air. We're calling thousands of our neighbors tonight, so please be patient as we connect this call. Your input is extremely important, and it will help city leaders ensure that we continue providing both critical services to our residents while prioritizing areas of need. Again, if you'd like to ask a question or share your comment or concern, just press zero on your keypad. We're also streaming on Facebook, and we'll be taking questions and comments from that feed as well. Simply type up your question in the comments, press enter, and I'll read those over the air as well. This telephone meeting is also final casting en español. If you'd rather listen to this event in Spanish, dial marque ocho 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 cuatro cero cero nueve tres cuatro dos. Otra vez, si quieres escuchar este evento en español, cuelgue y marque ocho 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 cuatro cero cero nueve tres cuatro dos. So again, we're dialing out to thousands of our residents this evening. You're joining the city of San Antonio for a Telephone Town Hall meeting regarding the city's fiscal year 2023 proposed budget. We're joined by City Manager Eric Walsh, Deputy City Manager Maria Villa Gomez, and many of our city officials on the air to learn, to help answer your questions about the city budget. If at any time during this call you'd like to ask a question, leave a comment or share your concern, press zero on your keypad. Again, that's press zero on your keypad to ask a question of our city manager and the other city officials who are on this call. If you're watching on Facebook, once again, you can also leave your question in the comments, and we'll read those live on the air. Para escuchar y participar en esta junta en español, por favor cuelgue y marque ocho 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 cuatro cero cero nueve tres cuatro dos. And now, I'd like to turn it over to City Manager Eric Walsh to share a little bit about what's inside the proposed budget.
Thanks, Laura. Good evening again. My name is Eric Walsh. I'm the city manager of San Antonio, and I want to thank you for taking your time out of your busy schedules to join us tonight for this important budget discussion. Tonight's conversation is interactive, so if at any point you have a question or comment, please press zero on your keypad. I'm also joined by members of the city team from our police, fire, parks, human services, neighborhood and housing services, library, health, animal care services, public works, and code enforcement, all here to answer any questions you might have. As a reminder, if you'd like to join our conversation tonight with your question, comment, or concern, please press zero on your keypad at home. Before we take your questions and hear from you, let's jump right into some of the highlights of the budget. The first is that the city of San Antonio's proposed 2023 proposed budget invests in our continued economic recovery and includes a recommendation to push fifty or seventy-two and a half million dollars in relief back to residents. Twenty-two and a half million of that in terms of property tax relief and fifty million dollars in credits to our CPS energy customers. The proposed budget also invests in the retention and recruitment of city employees by raising our entry wages and providing an across-the-board increase for our civilian employees. We have a variety of things we do as a city, and it is important that we keep our positions filled. Everything from picking up trash, working in the parks, our 911 center, our airports, our librarians. So ensuring that we are staying competitive with the labor market is important and is included within the proposed budget. Thirdly, we are preparing to launch off into the largest infrastructure investments we've ever had as a city. Our $1.2 billion bond program that the voters approved in May will begin work on that project next year. We'll also be working and gearing up with a major airport expansion, but also a lot of facility work in our parks department, our libraries, our convention center, and the Alamo Dome. So what are some of the budget facts? Our overall budget is $3.4 billion, and that's made up of three distinct areas. One and a half billion is our general fund, which is where we collect all of our general revenue and pay for all of our basic services. We have a capital budget of $641 million, and that's all of our capital infrastructure work for next year, and what we call a restricted funds budget of $1.2 billion. Those are all the federal and state grants we receive, but it's also where our businesses that support themselves with their own revenue reside. The airport, our solid waste operations, hotel occupancy tax, and our stormwater operations. Next year in fiscal year 23, we'll have 13,362 authorized positions, and many of them are there now. We are making a concerted effort to improve the positions we need and making sure we have the resources in place to be able to deliver on those capital infrastructure projects. One of the key priorities of the council as they met with their goal-setting session in the springtime was providing direct relief to residents of San Antonio in terms of city property tax relief. In June, the mayor and council approved additional property tax relief by increasing the city's homestead exemption from 0.1% of the value of your home to 10%. Secondly, they increased the over-65 exemption from $65,000 to $85,000, and the city's disabled persons exemption from $12,500 to $85,000. All told, those actions the council took in June are included in the proposed budget for next year, and they total $22.5 million in revenue that the city will forego, thereby keeping those savings with taxpayers. The property tax, the city's property tax rate is also decreasing 1.67 cents. That's the first time since 2016 that the property tax rate has decreased. This is critical and impacts everybody, whether you own a home or own a business. That tax rate decrease on the city's portion of your tax bill is critical. Just as a reminder, I want to point out, remind everybody that out of your total tax bill, the city makes up 20% of it. The balance of that going to the county and school districts and hospital district. And so that was a key priority of the council, and that was included in next year's budget. Now, at the beginning, I talked about $72.5 million in relief. So I just talked about $22.5 million in terms of property tax relief. The balance of that is coming from $50 million that the city received from CPS Energy. San Antonio, the city of San Antonio owns CPS and purchased them back in, you know, seventy-some-odd years ago, and we collect 14% of their revenue. Now CPS was a private company, they would be paying sales, they would be paying property tax to the city for the use of our right-of-way, for the transmission lines and so forth. So this return, this 14%, is one of our three major revenue sources. In June, in May, when we presented the trial budget to council, we were expecting to be $35 million over budget in our revenue this year. And as gas prices have continued to escalate, and we've gone through a pretty hot summer and demand for power has been up, we have seen an extraordinarily high growth in revenue to the city, just like you have as ratepayers, seeing an extraordinarily high utility bills throughout the summer. Now, we usually bet that this unpredictable revenue source is best-case scenario, two, three, or maybe 4% over budget, but not 21% over budget. So I'm recommending in the proposed budget that we credit $50 million to all customers of CPS. Five million would be provided to assist eligible low-income residential customers, and $45 million would be fairly distributed in the same way the money was collected to the city, based on each customer's energy usage during the month of July. That credit would be applied to everybody's October bill. So it's really using the usage of July, what you paid, and applying that credit to the month of October. The average residential customer in the month of July saw a two-hundred, average of $230 electrical bill. That average residential customer would see a $31 credit in their October bill. If you used more power, if you had, or more power, then you'd get a higher credit. If you used less, you'd get a smaller credit. While this $50 million certainly doesn't solve the problem of soaring temperatures and high fuel costs, as the owners of CPS Energy, it's the city doing its part. Again, you all have seen extraordinarily high utility bills, and we have seen extraordinarily and unexpected revenue growth, and it's the city doing its part. Laura?
So, thank you so much, Eric. Lots of great highlights in tonight's budget. I know we have many folks on the call already. If you're just now joining us, this is a Telephone Town Hall regarding the city's fiscal year 2023 proposed budget. We'll be taking your questions live on the air, so just press zero if you'd like to ask a question. If you'd like your question to be read over the air, you can also do that by pressing zero. Another way you can ask your question is if you're watching on Facebook, just type your question into the comments, and we'll read those live over the air as well. I do want to make one note. Para escuchar esta junta en español, por favor marque ocho cuatro cuatro, ocho ocho uno, uno tres, uno siete. Now, Eric, you covered a lot of highlights, but I think our public would also like to know a little bit more about what's inside the infrastructure part of this budget. So why don't you tell us about that?
Sure. And I mentioned earlier, we're beginning the work on the $1.2 billion 2022 bond program. But just in terms of infrastructure maintenance, this year in the proposed budget, we have $154 million to deal with streets, sidewalks, traffic signals, alley maintenance. This represents a $13 million increase over this year's budget. This was a high priority for both the council and the community when they responded back to our budget survey at the beginning of summer. And so this is a, this is a critical area. The council talked about this last week at their budget work session, and I suspect they'll continue to have conversation as we go through the next month.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Now, we're going to turn it over to our deputy city manager, Maria Villa Gomez, to share a little bit more about other important city services. Welcome, Maria.
Thank you, Laura, and thank you all for joining us this evening. So I want to share with you another highlights that are included in our fiscal year 2023 proposed budget. So let me start with public safety, police and fire. Police and fire were also priorities in the resident survey that we conducted to know your priorities for the preparation of this upcoming budget. So in terms of police, we know that like any other city across the country, we have seen an increase in crime. So in order to address that, the police department is working in different initiatives, and this proposed budget recommends that we add a total of 78 new police officer positions. Fifty of these positions will be allocated to help us address violent crime across our city, and we are currently working with UTSA to develop a plan specifically to address violent crime here in San Antonio. So 50 of those officers that are recommended within the proposed budget will be allocated to do that. Also, in this upcoming fiscal year, we are adding 28 supervisory positions for the opening of a police facility, a police station located in North St. Mary Street. This particular project was approved in the 2017 bond program and is estimated to be completed in January of 2024. So in order for us to have it ready with a number of supervisors, we need to add 28 uniform positions to be able to provide that supervision. There's also some civilian positions, a total of seven, that are recommended in the proposed budget to provide support for that facility as well. Now, let me transition to our fire department, and fire was another priority of our community. So what we are proposing in this upcoming budget is to add a ladder company, one of those big pieces of equipment that you see out in the community responding to fire calls and also to medical calls. So we are adding a fire company for Fire Station 45, and this particular ladder company will have 15 new firefighter positions included. Also, as part of the 2017 bond program, there was a replacement of a fire station, Fire Station 24, that is located between Council Districts Two and Council District Nine, I'm sorry, Council District 10, in the northeast part of the city. So this particular fire station will be completed in the fall of 2022. So we're adding the positions necessary to be able to add an emergency medical team that will give us the ability to respond to additional medical calls across the city. So that's, that's what we're doing in terms of fire operations. Also, one of the priorities that we discussed as we were having conversations with the community about the 2022 bond program was a replacement of some of our fire stations that need to be replaced. So the capital budget includes funding for the replacement of one fire station in the southeast of our community, and also the replacing two temporary fire stations to make them permanent. That is also included in the budget. So outside of public safety, there's also other investments that we are making. Parks and Recreation was also one of the top five priorities of the community. So we are adding close to $20 million in investments to be able to improve many of the park facilities that we have across the city. We have over 200 parks in our community. So about $7.7 million is allocated to make improvements at 17 different community centers and park facilities across the city. In addition to that, there's $10 million allocated to continue with the Edwards Aquifer acquisition program that the city has had for several years, and this $10 million will allow us to continue that acquisition and to protect the Edwards Aquifer. And finally, in parks, we are also adding funding to enhance the city's summer youth program that perhaps many of you or your children participated in that program during the summer. So let me also share with you some of the improvements that we're making in our metro health department. Public health has been a priority of our community for the past few years, and our metro health department has a strategic plan that is called SA Forward. And this particular plan is, was originally funded through federal grants and some resources from the city. So in this year's budget, we are transitioning some of those grants into the general fund to continue to provide important services to the community, like access to care, mental health, and violence prevention, to mention a few. And finally, the last highlight that I want to share with you is housing affordability. That has been also a priority of the community and in our city council to ensure that we have resources to continue to provide affordable housing units to our community. So in this year's budget, there's $136 million allocated that would result in adding about 2,500 new housing units in our community, and this is a very much needed enhancement in some areas of our city. And just to share with you, to continue the commitment of the city to affordable housing over the next five years through city funds, our 2022 bond program, and federal dollars, we will be investing about $360 million in affordable housing programs. So those are some of the highlights, and I'm going to turn it back to Laura Mays.
Thank you so much, Eric and Maria. As you can tell, lots to see in this proposed budget, so much that we can't cover it all tonight, but I invite you to learn more about the proposed budget at sanantonio.gov/budget. And now it's time to take our callers' questions. So just a reminder, we have folks on from animal care services, from public works, neighborhood and housing services, development services, parks and rec, metro health, library, human services, solid waste, police, and many more questions we can answer. We're going to start out with a question on police. This one comes to us from Kathy in District Three. Kathy, you're live on the air. Kathy, do we still have you?
Kathy, yes, I'm here.
Excellent. Go ahead and ask your question.
Yes, I understand that we're going to put a lot of new investigators out there, but what we really need to see in this town, and I've lived in San Antonio for 45 years, we need police officers on the street doing patrol. We have too many people driving 100 miles an hour down the freeway, and it is a safety concern for us older folks and these younger kids. I don't know what the problem is, but something needs to be resolved with this.
All right. Assistant Police Chief Karen Fox, if you would assist Kathy with that question.
Well, Kathy, thank you for the question. What I can tell you is, is those, those new officers that the deputy city manager talked about, they are, they are police officers. They will actually be boots on the ground, and 50 of those will be dedicated to violent crime and the initiative that, that the deputy city manager talked about. And so they're not actually going to be investigators, so they will be boots on the ground. And when it comes to the speeding and the traffic enforcement that you're speaking of, you know, we have a very robust traffic section, and also the officers who are out responding to calls for service each and every day are also responsible for enforcing traffic laws. And, and so that's part of their jobs day in and day out. And if you have a particular area, I can certainly talk with you in the chat, or I can send you my information, and you can reach out to me, and I can certainly provide some guidance and see what we can do in your particular area.
Excellent. Thank you, Assistant Police Chief Karen Fox. Kathy, we have your information, so we'll go ahead and make sure we share that with the police department to get connected. Our next question is relating to animal care services, and we've got Vicki from District Seven on the line. Vicki, go ahead.
Yes, my question is related to backyard breeders in San Antonio, and is there anything in the budget that specifically addresses that?
Thank you so much for the question, Vicki. There's not anything in specific that relates directly to backyard breeding. However, currently, even though it's not reflected in the budget, we are in a heavy recruiting right now for more animal care officers. And I believe as we get more, more officers back in the streets and everything, you'll start to see the needle move on those, on those, on those calls that are less associated with imminent, you know, possible loss of life, also violence and attacks, things like that. As we get those, those positions fleshed out, we'll be able to go ahead and focus a little bit more on those backyard breeders.
Thank you so much, Shannon Sims. Our next caller on the line has a question for our city manager, Eric Walsh. Rebecca from the North Star Mall area, go ahead and ask your question.
Hi, my name is Rebecca. There, I work for Parks and Recreation. I believe last year during the fiscal year, we got a 4% raise, and I wanted to know exactly how much percent are we going to get this year, or is it going to be a flat rate? And one more other question. Is there any way we can go to like a four-day work week because the gas prices are killing me to get to work?
So your name was Rebecca? Your name was, is Rebecca? And you work for Parks and Rec?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for, for, you know, working for the city and serving the community. The, you're right, last year, there was a 4% across the board and a 1% lump sum for all civilian employees. In the proposed budget, we have a 5% across the board and a minimum of 2% market adjustment to keep up with, with other sectors of the, of the job market. So two-thirds of the 7,400 employees that we have, civilian employees, will get a 7%. And in terms of a four-day work week, you know, it kind of depends on what your job is. There are some positions for the city that are more office environment, that are still on a hybrid schedule, and that's really to kind of take care of the, give employees the flexibility that I think they're asking for. Unfortunately, I don't know what role you play at Parks and Rec. Unfortunately, a lot of our jobs can't be done remotely. But, you know, certainly if you have suggestions, please submit them to your, to your HR specialist in Parks and Rec, and those things, those conversations are happening constantly. Partly the reason why we are including the 5% plus the 2% for all civilian employees is to recognize that the cost of living has, has certainly increased here over the last, over the last year. Thanks for working for the city.
Thank you so much, Eric, and thank you, Rebecca, for being part of the city team. So as you can see, we're taking your calls live on the air. So if at any time you have a question for us, go ahead and press zero on your keypad, and you can ask a question just like our neighbors. As well, you can ask a question on Facebook just by typing your question in the chat there on Facebook, and we'll read those on the air as well. Our next question is for Veronica of our Neighborhood and Housing Services Department. We've got Loura on the air from South San Antonio. Loura, go ahead.
Hi. So I, you know, I heard you guys saying that, you know, we are going to be increasing some policing and, you know, increasing some affordable housing. And I'm just wondering, you know, because, I mean, I hear, I hear the safety concerns of other, of other folks in the city, but I really feel that, you know, there's a missed opportunity here to get to the root cause of why people are, you know, or young people are, you know, there's more crime, and, you know, a big part of that is just, you know, the, the, the access to like mutual aid and food security, home security, like housing security. And I feel that, you know, if we invested more of our money in making sure that people's basic needs and housing needs were, were met on a higher rate per capita, that we wouldn't need to be policed, especially when we have a police department that is not accountable to racial violence, that's not accountable to, you know, to even their, their behavior outside of being in the uniform. We have so many police officers that, that are, you know, you know, that have accounts of domestic violence, that have accounts of like, you know, violence outside of the workforce, and that, you know, have just a lot of work to do to like screen them for, you know, just basic, you know, human interaction, you know, like, I mean, I have, you know, I have neighbors here that, and in, in my neighborhood that have children that are, you know, mentally, you know, disabled or are on the spectrum and, or, you know, suffer from mental, mental health. And instead of, you know, getting them the type of support that they need with mental health, you know, we're constantly dealing with cops on our, in our neighborhood when really like our neighbors need more support, you know, from, with mental health services, you know, and I just feel that that's a waste of money, and it really makes it feel like you don't trust your citizens by policing more.
Thank you, Loura. I think we have a couple of items here in your question, so why don't we start with the housing portion? Veronica, go ahead.
Sure. Thank you, Loura, for, for your comments. We do recognize that in order to have, you know, feel safe, whatever that means to every person, they have to have stability in their lives, and having stable housing is a root cause, like you mentioned. It's a big part of that. So we recognize that, and as, as our city leadership mentioned, we have about $136 million being invested in affordable housing next year. And, and part of that budget is about $1.3 million in what we call our coordinated housing system because we can't do it alone. So we are recognizing that in order to have stability at home, we need to work with other partners and other departments, not just Neighborhood and Housing Services, but working with our Department of Human Services, working with PD, working with all of our partner departments, so we can coordinate our affordable housing efforts with what other partners are doing to help lift people up and feel more secure wherever they may be. So just rest assured that there are a lot of efforts happening, kind of all coordinated at the same time, to address a person's personal security, whether it be at home, or helping them with their education, helping them out of tough situations, everything that you mentioned. We're working as a team to try and address that.
Thank you, Veronica. And Loura, you And Loura, you shared some concerns about policing, so I'd like to ask our Assistant Police Chief Karen Fox to weigh in on that part of your question.
No, you know, I absolutely agree that if we can meet the very basic needs of our public, then, you know, we probably would have less interaction with police officers. I guarantee if people had their needs met, they would feel safe, they would feel secure. They might not feel the need to call police or engage in behavior that would require police intervention. So, I agree with many of the things that you said. When you talked about mental health issues, you're so right. You know, a large population of ours are very vulnerable. And when it comes to mental health, we have a, you know, we're growing our mental health unit. We started with two, and through the years, we're now, we have nineteen mental health officers, and we're trying to grow that. We just started our SA Core, which is our multi-disciplinary response team to mental health, which is a clinician, a paramedic, and a mental health officer. And the purpose of that is for the clinician to be able to provide services there out where the consumer may be, as opposed to having to arrest a situation. So, we're trying very hard. And if you listen to the Deputy City Manager, many of these projects and many of these initiatives are in the budget because we're trying to do better, we're trying to recognize that if we meet those basic needs, perhaps your concerns will be addressed.
And Laura, let me just also add, you know, obviously, any infractions of any employees, particularly our public safety employees, where we really entrust a lot of responsibility and authority to keep us safe, that when we have issues, whether on duty or off duty, that are inappropriate, then we deal with those employees. That is not something that I think either chief believes is acceptable. Certainly, I don't believe it's acceptable, because there is a level of trust, as the caller indicated, that is critical to maintaining that relationship with the community. And we prioritize that in the last collective bargaining agreement with the Police Officers Association, to give the chief's decision on discipline more weight, and not leave it subject to some arbitrator who, in most cases, is coming from out of town to weigh in on those disciplinary facts. So, it is critical, and certainly we pay attention to it, and I just wanted to share that.
Excellent, thank you all so much. And Loura, thank you for sharing those concerns with us. Our next caller comes to us from District Six. This is a question for Patrick of our Human Services Department. Nina, you are live on the air, go ahead and ask your question.
Yes, yes, good afternoon. My question is, what is in the budget to help the homeless situation around the schools? I see a lot of homeless around the schools, and of course, children are exposed to that, but also, they throw a lot of trash, and so kids go walking, they have to go through what's called the trash that homeless throw away. And also, in other empty lots throughout the city. What is the, is there any budget that's going to be looking into this issue?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Yeah, this budget does continue our investment in Haven for Hope and various other services. But there is new funds this year to continue a homeless street outreach program that we developed during the pandemic, just over the last year and a half, to proactively engage with folks who are on the streets, working to connect them to services, programs that will connect them ultimately to stable housing. But we know that's a process, folks who have been on the streets for a long time are living day-to-day in a crisis situation in their lives. So, we proactively engage with those folks on the streets, work to connect them to the right programs that the city's funding and that other programs or other sources are funding. And then, we also do have a process for when encampments pose a health or a safety issue. So, like you mentioned, encampments near schools, other sensitive types of things like that. We do have a process where we will do this street outreach, engage folks there, offer them services. But if it poses a health and safety issue, we work as coordinated city departments, across departments, to do a site abatement of that encampment, and to pick up whatever there may be, whether it's needles or just trash in general, to clear that from the area, restore it to how it was before. We do work with solid waste closely on that. And so, those are our two approaches, as well as investing in the services that we have provided for several years.
Laura, can I add to that?
Of course, go ahead, David.
Just to add to what Patrick said, this budget includes an additional crew. We're calling it a hotshot crew to go out and clean up illegal dumping and litter on the right of way, but also these homeless encampments when it comes time to clean those up, like Patrick said. So, we're effectively, we will be doubling our efforts on cleaning up illegal dumping and these kinds of things. Thanks.
Excellent, thank you, David Newman and Patrick Speck from our Human Services and Solid Waste Department. Our next question here is from Emma, and Emma, go ahead, you are live on the air.
Hi, I had a question about considering the amount of infrastructure funding that is in the proposed budget for next year, and the passage of the new Inflation Reduction Act, how much of the budget for next year is going to go towards green infrastructure or trying to secure funding for green infrastructure to sort of combat environmental injustice and climate change in our own backyard, as it were?
Great question, Emma, thank you. I'm gonna ask Kristy to weigh in from the infrastructure side first, go ahead.
Sure, Kristy Chapman with Public Works, thank you for your question. So, as part of the 2022 bond program, it was very important for us to consider which projects could actually include green infrastructure. And we do have that information that I'd be more than happy to provide to you. But we work really closely with the San Antonio River Authority on looking at the bond projects, seeing what's feasible, what can be maintained. And so, green infrastructure is very important to us, and so I'd be more than happy to share those projects with you.
Great, thank you so much, Kristy. And Emma, since we have your contact information, we'll be sure to connect you with Kristy from Public Works as well to get you some more information on that. Thanks for that question. So, next up, we have Ben on the line, and Ben has a question for our Deputy City Manager Maria Villagomez. Ben, go ahead.
Yes, I haven't heard much discussion about arts in the budget. And in particular, I'm very concerned that we allowed the San Antonio Symphony to disappear, and the city did not seem to take an interest in the fact that we had had that symphony going for almost a hundred years, and it indicated that we were a first-class city and not a third-class city. And what do they think they're going to do about the loss of the symphony?
Hi, thank you for that question. So, let me give you some context on what we have in the proposed budget for arts. So, the city has a funding source that is called the Hotel of the Fancy Tax. This is a tax that is assessed to every hotel room that is utilized here in the city. And of that revenue that the city receives from the Hotel of the Fancy Tax, there's fifteen percent that is allocated specifically for arts. So, the 2023 budget has a total of eleven point nine million dollars allocated for arts activity, for Arts and Culture Department, and also to support cultural agencies. There's a total of seven point two million dollars out of that eleven point nine. We have a process through our Arts and Culture Department to allocate that funding to eligible entities. And to your point, the symphony was one of those agencies that the city has funded for many years and contributed for many years through this particular funding source. They're not included in our proposed budget because of operational reasons that the symphony had, that you are very well aware of. But arts is very important to the city, and not only in our operating budget, but also through the American Rescue Act plan, the federal dollars that we receive. The city council allocated five million dollars to arts, specifically to assist agencies to be able to recover from the COVID-19 pandemic. So, those are the two programs that we currently have in the budget to continue to support arts and arts agencies here in our community.
Thank you, Maria, and thank you, Ben, for that question. So, just a reminder, if you'd like to ask your question live on the air as well, you can press zero on your keypad. If you'd rather not talk on the air, you can also just let your operator know that you'd like to have your question read. Or if you're watching on Facebook, you can leave a question in the comments. Our next question here is from Alicia from the northwest side of San Antonio. And this is a question for Metro Health Director Claude Jacob. Alicia, go ahead.
Well, actually, I have two questions. But first off, there's this crazy idea that the city of San Antonio wants to cut down a hundred trees in Breckenridge Park. And those are trees that are significant and should be preserved under our Tree Preservation Ordinance, but they're not, because there's plans for a venue, whatever it is. Whatever plans, you want to cut down all these trees. So, first off, The New York Times had a great article earlier, well, a month ago, about our heat island. San Antonio is a heat island that disproportionately affects people of, say, lower income. San Antonio also has air quality that is now at moderate nonattainment. We will have regulations kicking into place, because we are not meeting the air standards for our air quality. So, air pollution negatively impacts the US economy and our local economy, and it also contributes to earlier deaths. So, with all these plans to cut down all these trees, specifically at Breckenridge and elsewhere in the city, because we keep seeing a lot of property being razed, what are the plans that the city of San Antonio are gonna put into place to preserve our tree canopy? Because our trees give us oxygen and they filter pollution. If you continue to cut down these significant trees and think that planting a little six-foot tree is gonna give us the same ecological or value, you're not very, how do you say? There's research that you need to do, because you cannot get the same value from a six-foot tree that you can a hundred-year-old tree. And it seems that, there seems to be a disregard for the consideration of our air quality of the people and our heat island, because we know we all sweltered at a hundred and five, a hundred and ten heat index. And so, what are the plans that you all are gonna do to protect our tree canopy? So that I can, you know, safely go out in our environment and breathe? And so, our future generations can also have good air quality or decent air quality. Are you gonna put that into your budget to adhere to our Tree Preservation Ordinance? So that we don't have to invest a lot of money in trying to take care of people that are sick because they can't breathe our bad air? Or, you know, our heat island, we can't cool our houses, our air grid goes off the, you know, we lose our power? Are those things that you all are looking into? Because you should be, because that's our future, and that's the people of San Antonio's future and their children. And we should be preserving every tree in this city as best we can, because that's the easy, the cheapest way to help mitigate our air quality issues and our heat island issues. So, are we looking at stuff like that for our future?
Alicia, thank you so much for sharing those concerns with us. There are a couple of parts to this concern and question. So, I'd like to ask Claude to start by talking a little bit about some of the air quality initiatives that we do have with the city, and then I'll bring in Melinda to talk about the tree preservation work that the city does as well. Claude, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, can you hear me? All right, fantastic. Is it Melinda? Thank you for your question, really appreciate that. Just in broad strokes, your comments around air quality, just know that as your local health department, we work to prevent, promote, and protect, in that we work to promote healthier lifestyles, protect the community at large, and what we have in terms of our ongoing environmental health and scanning, we do have a robust program in monitoring our air quality here on the ground. We do work, not just here in the city, but across the county with our state-level partners. But we do monitor and report out in terms of the ozone designation. And what you signaled is in terms of the air pollution and the designation that we currently have, containing moderate and nonattainment. Just know that a lot of this, we're continuing to monitor on the ground, but just know this is anchored to the work here at Metro Health. We are one of the designated centers of excellence, which is based on our funding that we receive that supports the work on the ground. Just know we have a robust program. We also have a complement of health educators who continue to provide information to area neighborhoods, just to make sure that folks are aware of the different hazards and the ways that they can at least be mindful of what activities they can engage in, especially when there are elevated temperatures across the city. So, at the end of the day, we remain on task to make sure that we monitor the air quality and report out regularly. But we do appreciate your commentary around the tree canopy, and for that, I'll defer to my colleagues in some of the other departments. But just know that that's part and parcel with the work of Metro Health, that we continue to monitor the air quality, we continue to report out, and we just try to make sure that you take advantage of activities and just be mindful of the climate and some of the efforts that you can take place outdoors. So, I'll just stop there, Laura, and I appreciate the question. I'll turn it over to someone else who's gonna address the tree canopy, so I appreciate the commentary.
Thank you, Claude, and now we'll bring in Melinda from Parks and Recreation. Go ahead, Melinda.
Hi, good evening. At the Parks and Recreation Department for fiscal year twenty-three, we have developed a robust tree planting initiative that includes over five and a half million dollars in youth tree investments. That includes planting trees in residents' yards plus street tree plantings. So, we do take trees very seriously. We are looking to plant significant trees where appropriate. I think the specific question also was about a 2017 bond project in reference Breckenridge Park. So, we are underway in a robust community input process. We have a meeting scheduled next week to further discuss the project related to Breckenridge Park. So, continue to gather public input around that item as well.
Great, thank you, Linda and Claude. And if you'd like to learn more about that upcoming meeting, just go to saspeakup.com. You can learn more about the budget and see what other public meetings we have going on, such as that Breckenridge one. Next, I'm gonna read a question from our Facebook stream. We've got a few questions and comments coming in there. This one is for Patrick with Human Services. And Kat wants to know what portion of the budget, if any, are going towards partnering with local nonprofits to supplement some of these community issues that may stretch the budget too far on its own?
Sure, thanks for the question. The budget does include about twenty-eight million dollars in what we call delegate agency funding. So, those are twenty-eight million dollars going to nonprofit agencies for a variety of programs, so homelessness, older adults, strengthening families and a lot of children and youth investments. Those dollars are leveraged with those nonprofits. So, any program we're funding is not just funded by the city, but they're pulling in other dollars from philanthropy or other funders to, in effect, stretch the city's dollars to serve programs that serve residents of San Antonio. Maria also mentioned the ARPA funding and the Federal Recovery Act investments that we're making in nonprofits, the serving seniors, youth, mental health agencies as examples. So, those are the kinds of things that the city's making. And again, the city budget does include those twenty-eight million dollars for nonprofits specifically.
Great, thank you, Patrick. One more question here from our Facebook page. This one's for ACS. Kathleen wants to know what amount is being portioned for ACS? And what are they planning to do with it? Shannon, why don't you help us answer that question?
Yeah, Kathleen, thank you so much for that question. There's a few different approaches right now that we're moving towards in this year's budget. ACS, you know, we've heard for a very good while now that people just aren't answering the phone, they can't get ahold of someone at ACS. One of the major things that we're doing is actually standing up a five-person call service team, so individuals will be able to call the 2074 PET number, and there's always going to be somebody there to answer that question. These individuals will also be monitoring all of our social media to make sure that we have good answers coming through in a timely manner. And if nothing else, these individuals may not have the answer, but they can get you in contact with the person that has that answer. We are also going to be making a significant investment in the personnel situation within our clinic. We're going to be adding about nine physicians to our clinic for about, it's gonna be about- uh it's gonna be about four hundred fifty-one thousand dollars uh in additional positions for veterinary technicians and things like that. We know that we're seeing about five thousand more injured animals than we were five years ago. Uh but we have not added significantly to our clinic staff since two thousand thirteen. So we're rightsizing that, uh increasing the number of community vaccine clinics. So now we're gonna continue those vaccine clinics that we piloted in twenty twenty two. And uh we're gonna double up on those and have those add in the communities of greatest need. And the thing that I'm probably the most excited about is we're going to be uh seeking to build a support kennel to be able to provide a transitional room as we move animals around. It gives us that little extra space uh to provide uh safety in more days in the kennels uh for those animals that need more time to actually recover.
Great. Thank you, Shannon. And again, if you'd like to learn more about what's inside the proposed budget, you can go to sanantonio.gov slash budget. Our next question came to us in Spanish. This is from Maria for our Maria. And the question says, how can I report this? There is a park near me that is really pretty, but I can't walk there because there are so many people blocking the sidewalks. There is trash and there is no lighting. Is there money in the budget for this and more police presence there? Because I have security concerns using the park. Maria, if you would answer this one in Espanol.
Claro que sí, Laura. Buenas tardes, María. Gracias por esa pregunta. La seguridad de nuestros parques así como la limpieza son prioridades de nuestro municipio. Así que si estás, si tú ves que no las luces no están trabajando o que quizás no te sientas segura por cualquier razón, si si las luces no están trabajando, por favor llama al tres uno uno, que es el three one one, para reportar que las luces no están funcionando para que nuestro departamento las pueda ir a cambiar y este y arreglarlas. O puedes este dejarnos tu información y nosotros estamos seguros de de llamarte para que nos des la el parque donde las luces no están trabajando. Si vas a un parque y y no te sientes segura por cualquier razón y es es una situación que tú te sientas incómoda, puedes llamar inmediatamente al nueve uno uno para que nosotros te te podamos ayudar. Pero si es una observación que quizás tú digas necesitamos más a presencia policiaca o necesitamos más seguridad, uh puedes llamar al número de de no de que no es de emergencia, que es el dos se, dos cero siete, siete cuatro, siete tres, siete cuatro. Uh or también puedes llamar al tres uno uno para que nosotros eh podemos tener más presencia de nuestros de nuestros policías. Nosotros generalmente tenemos los policías que son especialmente para parques. Así que tenemos un número de oficiales que se dedica a a todos los parques de la ciudad. Así que si nos puedes dejar el el nombre de ese parque, nosotros nos aseguramos que tengamos esa presencia para que nuestros parques sigan siendo bonitos, que tengan seguridad y que estén limpios. Gracias, María.
Gracias, María y María también para esta pregunta. Um our next question comes to us uh live on the air. This is Mike from Northeast San Antonio. Mike, go ahead and ask your question. Mike, do we have you on the phone? Mike, do we have you? If not, I'll go ahead and read your question here. All right. So I'm gonna read this one. It is for um the our Assistant Police Chief Karen Fox. This comes to us again from Mike from Northeast San Antonio. He says, opening a new police station in Saint Saint Mary's. I don't think we have any stations up here. I don't see many cops up this way. So Karen, if you can address that question and concern for him.
Well, okay, so Mike, um I appreciate uh, I don't know if that's a question or a comment. I couldn't really tell. Uh you're right. So uh this new substation is kind of a long time coming. Uh it's actually um going to service some of what we call our entertainment districts. Uh the Pearl, um uh Saint Mary's uh Strip, uh also down some King William. So it it has a very specific purpose, uh which which I think is is we all kind of think it's a long time coming. Uh it's gonna be a smaller substation than the ones you you are are um familiar with. Uh it's gonna be less less officers assigned so they can concentrate more on some of those entertainment zones that I mentioned. Uh and so you'll see more officers uh concentrated in those areas. So we're really looking forward to it. We're excited about the building. We're excited about getting officers assigned there. And so I think I think it's gonna be very good for the community and for for those folks who are living in those areas.
Excellent. Thank you, Mike, and uh I hope we addressed that question. We've got your info though, so once again, we'll share that with the police department just in case you have any other concerns or comments for us. Um our next question comes to us from our email, those that submitted questions from essayspeakup@sanantonio.gov. Warren asks, what is the budget for road repairs? I consider that to be San Antonio's biggest problem. Christie Chapman from Public Works, could you help Warren with that question?
Sure. Um thank you for the question, Warren. So this year, we actually have an increase in our street maintenance program. For twenty twenty-three, the budget is a hundred and sixteen million. Um but something to keep in mind is the recent um voter-approved twenty twenty-two bond program actually dedicated a hundred point five million to address our worst streets across the city. So each district is going to get an allocation to address those worst streets. Um so um we know every day, every year, our roadway conditions continue to improve and we're looking forward um to delivering those projects um and working hard to get those streets in better condition.
Thank you, Christie, and thank you, Warren, for submitting that question for us. I know there are many more questions and comments and this conversation about the budget is never over until it's adopted. So we hope you'll join us at another upcoming uh town hall meeting. Or if you know of a friend or neighbor who couldn't make it tonight, tell them to visit essayspeakup.com for that full schedule. Now let me hand it over to our City Manager Eric Walsh for any closing remarks.
Laura, thank you. I want to quickly thank the city staff who joined us this evening uh in the last couple of weeks at the other town halls. We do have budget town halls scheduled this week and next week. So go to our website uh and and if you'd like to, if you'd like to participate in person. Um more importantly, I want to thank you, our residents, for your questions and feedback tonight and spending some of your evening with us. Uh as Laura mentioned, we're not done yet. Uh the proposed budget will be going to council uh for their adoption on September fifteenth. Thank you again for joining us this evening and and be sure to visit sanantonio.gov for more information. Good night, San Antonio.
Economic Development Coordinator for the Industry Division of the Economic Development Team. So in my role, I get to collaborate within our department, with other departments and with external partners on driving economic development forward.
I support San Antonio's international interests through communication and coordination and engagement with Consular Corps as well as our sister cities and